Privilege of the floor. At times that, you know, we have a handful of folks signing up for privilege of the floor. I think a few extra points about it. It's a privilege, it's important. Good and bad are both welcome. Criticism and support, both welcome. Please follow the rules. That's all we ask. Keep in mind, this is a platform for listening, not necessarily responding. If you've had enough speaking, please write an email. But remember to sign your emails because we can't respond to anonymous emails. That's really important. In this whole spiel I give about privilege of the floor, we do give each speaker four minutes and thirty two minutes total. And we have seven total speakers signed up tonight. So keeping that in mind, we had one more. It is at the discretion of the board president to let people keep talking, to go over that time. The past practice has been that I've tried to follow since this team has nominated me to be president, to not cut anybody off, to give them the time, and do our best to not go over the thirty two minutes total. That is the target. But it could be extended at the discretion of the president. Please keep in mind that to respect people and the policy saying a student's name or a staff member's name personally or their title is against the policy. And I would have to interrupt you, which I don't like to do and want to do. I've only had to do that once or twice as a reminder. But we'd like everyone to continue to speak and say what you have to say. So please just do your best to respect the policy. You know, on the other side of that, what I would ask very respectfully is that if you're listening and you're waiting for me to misspeak and possibly say something that's misaligned with the policy and you're ready to draft a legal letter and send it over to us and have to have us then send it to our legal team, please don't be so vindictive. Let's not waste taxpayer time and money. Just be respectful, kind, courteous, put another. Think about all those exemplary examples that we just gave of the good teachings and people that are doing the hard work in the district. So that's my entire spiel. Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on with our next points. Moving on to privilege of the floor. I mean, everybody received this and signed it, but I'll read it anyway. No, I've covered most of it. Persons wishing to speak should first be recognized by the president, then identify themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify as a spokesperson. How much shall be brief and concise, generally not exceeding four minutes in length per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the board president? Each privilege of the floor session is not to exceed thirty two minutes in length. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. Considering we have a handful of folks, I will set the timer for you as guidance, just to keep things going, not necessarily to rush you. The board will not permit public session discussions involving individual district personnel by name or by title or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Again, thank you for listening to everything I had to say. And we'll be moving on. Our first speaker here is Mr. Paul Venice.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you, thank you for your service. I've taught many of your children. I've coached some of your children. The last thing I want to do is be here right now. But I teach history and I teach about doing the right thing. And that's why I'm here. I prepared a statement I'd like to read. Good evening. My name is Paul Venice. I've been a teacher for twenty seven years. I purchased my home in the Goshen School District twenty six years ago. And I've been teaching in the Goshen School District for twenty five years. In the time I've lived in and taught in the district, I've never exercised my privilege of the floor at Board of Education meeting. Please pardon me while I give a brief background of my experience. Prior to teaching, I was a construction supervisor in a non-commissioned office.
Third year and there were over a hundred kids, smiling faces, running around. I mean, they've done so well that they already have new lights in the cafeteria. So students, amazing work, keep it up. And really, you know, you just, you can't do things like that without the support of passionate, dedicated administrators and teachers who want to make it happen. When these programs first start, no budget, no stipends, they just did. They made it happen. They saw an opportunity to grow programs here for our students. So great work and thank you for supporting all that students. It's an outstanding job. I said a few uh thank yous already to parent and non-parent volunteers, but I think they just need to be recognized again. Everything mentioned prior, the countless hours that you put in from coaching to fundraising to booster clubbing, to costuming, and everything in between, thank you so much. You really make these programs thrive. So lots of thank yous that I wanted to start out with tonight. Couple more points, I only have two pages tonight. So keeping in line with uh last year, I offered a congratulations to all community members who are deciding to campaign for the board. It's that time again where it's time to elect your next board members. And last year I said a few things about that as well, in general, for the community members that are thinking about dedicating their time and doing the good work. Um, a few points to make about that. There is a governance handbook available online. It's right on the school website. It talks about the roles of the board, a lot of obvious things. The policy work, the budget work, strategic planning and goal setting. Doing all of that with guidance from central office. Building a professional respectful relationship with the central office team. Try to make decisions. But then there are the less spoken responsibilities. More purply burdens. There are many burdens that come with the job, not to scare you away, but you should know. And they're not so clear in the governance man- manual. There may be issues that come up that are related to a student. It could be a discipline matter, it could not. It could be a staff member matter that comes up. There could be complaints, legal disputes, discrepancies, disciplines, contract negotiations. All of these items are items that if they hit the superintendent's table, you as a board member must be prepared to hear about and discuss within your purview. All discussed within executive session. Items in executive session, you have a legal obligation to not discuss or comment on these matters are private. They impact people's day to day. That's why I called it a burden. But be prepared to do the good work and good luck. You know, we live in a small town and. Sorry. Just give me a quick moment. That was surprising. We're, we're all members of this community. And at times you may have to deal with an issue. It's about a student you know, the family you know, that are great people. And maybe just asking for something not so ridiculous, but happens to need a superintendent permission and falls in your purview. You have to get involved and you're obligated to remove all your hats. Be ethical, be moral, be non-biased, seek the truth, and most importantly, just be human and make good informed judgments again within your purview. That's a challenging thing to do. Those are things that are not talked about in the governance manual. You choose to run for the board, do wish you all the best of luck. Those are things that sometimes come to the table, not easy to do. They're certainly challenging. So please, we implore you to go for it, do it. Do it for the right reasons. Don't do it for selfish reasons, for personal growths and gains. Do it for the right reasons. And good luck. I support you all. Alright. Again, I'm sorry, that was surprising for a moment there. Uh, last point, privilege of the floor. At times that, you know, we have a handful of folks signing up for privilege of the floor, it's important, I think a few extra points about it. It's a privilege, it's important. Good and bad are both welcome. Criticism and support, both welcome. Please follow the rules. That's all we ask. Keep in mind, this is a platform for listening, not necessarily responding. If you've had enough speaking, please write an email. But remember to sign your emails because we can't respond to anonymous emails. It's really important. In this whole spiel I give about privilege of the floor, we do give each speaker four minutes and thirty-two minutes total. And we have seven total speakers signed up tonight. So keeping that in mind, we had to do one more. It is at the discretion of the board president to let people keep talking, to go over that time. The past practice has been that I've tried to follow since this team has nominated me to be president, to not cut anybody off, to give them the time and do our best to not go over the thirty-two minutes total, that is the target. But it could be extended at the discretion of the president. Please keep in mind that to respect people and the policy, saying a student's name or a staff member's name personally or their title is against the policy and I would have to interrupt you, which I don't like to do and want to do. I've only had to do that once or twice as a reminder. But we'd like everyone to continue to speak and say what you have to say. So please just do your best to respect the policy. You know, on the other side of that, what I would ask very respectfully, is that if you're listening and you're waiting for me to misspeak and possibly say something that's misaligned with the policy and you're ready to draft a legal letter and send it over to us and have to have us then send it to our legal team, please don't be so vitigious. Let's not waste taxpayer time and money. Just be respectful, kind, courteous, put another, and think about all those exemplary examples that we just gave of the good teachings and people that are doing the hard work in the district. So that's my entire spiel. Thank you very much. And we're gonna go ahead and move on with our next ones. Alright. Moving on to privilege of the floor. I mean, everybody received this and signed it, but I'll read it anyway. Even though I've covered most of it, persons wishing to speak should first be recognized by the president, then identify themselves. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify as a spokesperson. How much shall we brief and concise, generally not exceeding four minutes in length per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the board president? Each privilege of the floor session is not to exceed thirty-two minutes in length. Speakers may comment on matters related to district business only. Considering we have a handful of folks, I will set the timer for you as guidance, just to keep things going, not necessarily to rush it. The board will not permit public session discussions involving individual district personnel by name or by title or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Again, thank you for listening to everything I had to say and we'll be moving on. Our first speaker here is Mr. Paul Venice.
Good evening, um Board of Education. Uh, thank you. Thank you for your service. I've taught many of your children. I've coached some of your children. The last thing I want to do is be here right now. But I teach history and I teach about doing the right thing and that's why I'm here. I prepared a statement I'd like to read. Good evening. My name is Paul Venice. I've been a teacher for twenty-seven years. I purchased my home in the Goshen School District twenty-six years ago. And I've been teaching in the Goshen School District for twenty-five years. In the time I've lived in and taught in the district, I've never exer- excuse me, exercised my privilege of the floor at Board of Education meeting. Please pardon me while I give a brief background to my experience. Prior to teaching, I was a construction supervisor in a non-commissioned officer in the United States Army in Army Reserves. I have school administrative certification and in the past have been an acting administrator in the CJ Hooker building. I've attended intensive United States Army non-commissioned officer leadership academies. The only reason I mention this is because I've been taught leadership and I have had the privilege of serving under and observing outstanding leaders. I am going to mention a couple of retired principals because they were outstanding. Is that okay?
I don't know of an issue with that.
Some of the leaders in the Goshen School District have been Principal Mary Ann Knight, Principal Bob Litz, and a former superintendent whose name I won't use because he's currently fulfilling a position within the district. They were all outstanding administrators who mentored and cared for their faculty and staff. When I was activated into the Army in two thousand three and two thousand four, those administrators continued to communicate with me and look out for me. They led by example. I hold the mentioned administrators in very high regard. The administrator who's recently been moved from CJ Hooker, who served there for eleven years and who was that building leader for six years, is better than those administrators that I do hold in such high regard. I've carried my Army Values card in my wallet for twenty-five years. Those values are loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. The first letter of each of those words phonetically spells leadership. The CJ Hooker administrator who was recently moved embodies and practices all of those values. She is our leader. I have a letter in support of our CJ Hooker leader, signed by almost all the veteran teachers of CJ Hooker. I will deliver a copy of that letter to the Board of Education without the signatures because there are teachers that fear retaliation. I'm asking the Board of Education to recognize the mistake that has taken place in moving this admin- in moving this administrator. And I'm asking you all to move her back to her rightful position as the CJ Hooker building leader. Mr. President, I was moved by what you said about the character and values needed to be on the Board of Education. And I believe you all possess that. And I thank you for it. And I'm asking you to practice that. As adults, we make mistakes, but as adults, we rectify those mistakes. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Alright, next we have Amy Abate.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Coats, Mr. Carter, and the Board of Education members and my fellow Goshen community members. My name is Amy Abate and I'm an eighth grade English teacher at CJ Hooker Middle School. I've taught many of your children as well. As a veteran staff member, I've always felt safe and supported and motivated to be the best teacher I can be for the children of the Goshen community. Leadership in an educational setting is often marked by challenges, but also as significant opportunities for positive change. The disruption in our leadership has been distressing and concerning to our school community. Not many people understand the inner workings of a middle school. It is the delicate balance between harboring the emotional and social learning of young adolescents and preparing their education for college and career readiness. To manage these types of daily challenges, it takes strong and consistent leadership. Having an interruption in what has been the school district's most consistent, long-tenured leadership is detrimental to our staff and for our students. I have witnessed firsthand their commitment to making meaningful contributions to the school community and ensuring that every student has the opportunity to succeed. It is important to recognize the efforts that go into navigating these demands while fostering an environment conducive to learning and development. The impact of their work is felt not only by the students, but also by the dedicated teachers and staff who strive to make a difference every day. This disruption sends the wrong message to the community and the students, and it can have long-term negative effects, especially when we live in a society of cancel culture where it is difficult to recover one's standing in society. In these moments, it is vital that we keep in mind the importance of maintaining consistency and leadership and fostering a stable and productive learning environment. Thank you for your time and for considering the perspectives of all involved in this important process. I appreciate the ongoing efforts the Board of Education makes in ensuring the success and growth of our school district. Thank you and have a great evening.
Alright, thank you very much. Next we have Josh Dornfest.
Uh, I'm Josh Dornfest. I teach at CJ Hooker Middle School. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been teaching in this district for thirty years. And over the past five years especially, I've seen our middle school grow into a place where students and staff truly thrive, even through some very challenging times, such as the COVID pandemic. There's been so much good in our building. From the top down, I felt encouraged to be creative, to take initiative, and to teach with compassion. That kind of environment doesn't just happen. It's a result of thoughtful leadership and shared commitment to community. There's a policy that prevents me from naming individuals or titles, which I fully respect. Still, I think we all know that education is deeply personal. Everyone can remember a teacher or mentor who made a difference in their life, not because of a policy, but because of who they were. I feel the same. It's the people who inspire me, guide me, and make this work meaningful. I came here hoping to speak about someone who's made significant impact on both me and the school I work in. While I won't name them, I can speak to what their leadership has created. A place where students feel safe and excited to learn and where staff feel supported and empowered to do their best work. When a parent tells me my child loves coming to school, that says everything. It means they feel comfortable, cared for, and believed in, and that's the foundation for real learning. The same goes for teachers. When we feel that way, we show up as our best selves. In light of the recent reassignment of leadership, I felt it was important to speak, to recognize the lasting value what's been built and the leadership behind it. As the district continues to grow and change, I hope we preserve the progress we've made, the people, the culture, and the care that make Goshen such a special place. Thank you for your time and for all you do.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is June Koch and I am a teacher aide over at Goshen Middle School. I have proudly served in that position in the district for nineteen years, with sixteen of those over at CJ Hooker Middle School. Over the last eleven years, the leadership has been exceptional, thanks to a certain administrator who has fostered a positive environment. As a family, we have always trusted that the Board of Education would make the right decisions. As my children are graduates of the Goshen Central School District, we entrust your decision-making because CJ Hooker has been led with grace, patience, and family-oriented values. This leadership has instilled in us the importance of understanding trust, safety, and allowing the children to express themselves without fear. Such a philosophy encourages active listening with a critical, empowering our young learners to seek help when needed and approach the right individuals for assistance. However, I am disheartened by the recent events. The halls of CJ Hooker feels empty, cold, and lifeless, without the leadership that has been taken away from us. Thank you for your time to hear my reflections.
Thank you very much. Next we have, next we have Alana Muster.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alana Muster. And um I'd like to address a serious concern about how our district is handling disciplinary proceedings against administrators, specifically the practice of rubber rooming, where an administrator can be removed from their duties and left in limbo, effectively treated as guilty until proven innocent. Under certain policies in New York, a superintendent can initiate disciplinary charges against a principal or other administrator and place them on administrative reassignment. While this is technically permissible, it can be misused to keep qualified professionals sidelined for months or even years before any process determines guilt or innocence. A recent case in our state highlights an administrator who endured a lengthy investigation, yet was ultimately cleared of all charges, revealing serious flaws in this approach. Make no mistake, these proceedings can become extraordinarily expensive. Districts across New York have spent hundreds of thousands, even over a million dollars, on legal fees, hearing costs, and investigative expenses. Meanwhile, attorneys often profit substantially from drawn-out cases, creating a perverse incentive to prolong the process. The reality is that our Board of Education is not required to follow a superintendent's recommendation blindly. You have the authority to step in, demand transparency, and limit these actions to avoid both unnecessary costs and reputational harm. Our community deserves accountability and fairness. We ask you to consider, consider whether such potentially abusive practices, costly for taxpayers and devastating for those unjustly accused, truly serve the best interest of our students and our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next we have Karen Hughes.
I wore my towel shoes.
Just pick it up a little closer.
This is terrifying. I get this. I make my students do this all the time. Uh, and so here I need to walk the walk. So my name is Karen Hughes. I am a Goshen grad. My husband was a Goshen grad. I went to school, kindergarten all the way on up through. Um, I have two cute little chickadees who came through and graduated in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Um, this is my twenty-eighth year in the district. I had three up at the high school. And I'm just in my twenty-fifth year here in the middle school. And I had the blessing of being able to teach over in Hanau, Germany, with the Department of Defense dependent schools and high school. Here, three years there in the middle school and here. And what I love so much about the middle school is the team. And we have a team here in Goshen and it's a place I wanted to come back to. We could have gone anywhere and this is where we wanted to be. So um I'm gonna use my little cheat sheet notes here. I've always felt deeply grateful to be supported by school friends, colleagues, students, parents, administrators, who always strive to lift each other up. We're a family in this district, in the middle school. I'm surrounded by folks who work tirelessly, yourselves included, to foster mutual respect, to forge our family ties. It's important to all of us that we build each other up to be better for ourselves and for each other. Now that sentiment is captured in a quote by Maya Angelou. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." I'm grateful and I'm blessed to work for and with people who always aspire to make us feel comfortable and relevant and seen and heard and valued and appreciated. These are things I endeavor to share every day with my students, their parents and guardians, and my middle school family. In my early years of teaching, I was encouraged by nurturing administrators and mentorship. In my middle years, I was able to apply lessons learned in my younger days from a variety of positive influences and experiences here in Goshen. And in Germany, when our school and military community rallied together to keep our families taken care of and as our soldiers and leaders were called to serve in Operation Joint Endeavor in Bosnia. And now here I am in my seasoned years. I'm still leaning into my trusted leadership. I maintain faith in our mission to be inspired and inspiring for ourselves and our little chickadees, right? We need to lift each other up and that's always what I pray that our school district family will continue to do. Please know I am very grateful for this opportunity to share with you how much I value all the things that we do to maintain investment in our district and our community and our district family. Thank you so much.
Now we have Doreen McGurley.
Hi, um, I don't have a speech to prepare because I wasn't planning on speaking, but when I was leaving, my daughter said, Mom, are you gonna talk? So I don't know, we'll see. She wants me to talk. I'm a mom of five. I've been in the district for twenty years. Four of my children have graduated. One is in eighth grade. In the twenty years I've been in this district, I know I sent my letter to all of the board members, but we have gone through an alarming number of administrators, like a ridiculously alarming number. In the high school, there've been fourteen, middle school, six, G I S, five, and S A S, five. And that's principals and vice principals alone. The administrator that was reassigned is on a very short list of ones that I've had to deal with personally and was amazing to work with. I don't feel that things were communicated to the public, to the parents. We found out, but with a letter that was sent through Parents' Square. It wasn't sent through email. You gotta say communication is key. Not everyone has Parents' Square. We saw it on social media. Not everyone has social media. We had to find out that she was reassigned through social media. It was over a week before anything was sent out to the parents. All the rumors of what did she do, what didn't she do? Kids coming home saying, Mom, the principal was, I'm sorry, the administrator was fired. We all know that's not true and we did communicate that to our children, but what message is that sending to our children? School is supposed to be a safe place for them, a place where they're comfortable, where they feel that they can trust their adults. If they're not being told things, if things are just happening, how are they supposed to feel comfortable? How are they supposed to feel that they can trust these adults if they don't even know who these adults are? If they're not being, um, I don't wanna say brought around, but introduced as a, you know, hey guys, this is the new administration, or even to the parents. Some of us who've been here longer know who the current administration is, but younger parents don't know. And in the twenty years, there has, the environment has changed so much and it has changed for the better. The administration has been so communicative. The administration has been so communicative. She, they have shown how they care about their students, how they care about the community, showing it to every event that I've been at in the past 15 years, 11 years. Not every administrator shows up. The current administration shows up. She makes, they make themselves available to parents, to the community, to the students. I know a lot of kids, like I said, I have five kids alone. So all of my bonus children are, I can't even count them all. But every student that I've ever talked to has felt comfortable with any issue going to that administrator. I had an issue. I went to that administrator. The administrator worked it out so that I didn't have an issue anymore. And other people have helped also, but this administrator is definitely community minded, student minded, staff minded. Makes it where you wanna be there. Makes it where you can openly call, email, talk. If they don't know the answer, they're gonna get a few. And is responding in a very timely manner, very open to the public, very who, what you see is what you get, and that's not always the case. And I know a lot of people don't say anything because they're afraid that there will be, what's the word, retaliation or undermining for their student or their family. Listen, what's gonna happen is gonna happen. Just know that there's a lot of people who are looking for answers, just as what happened, why, not exactly what happened. I know you can't really say, but there's no communication about what's been going on. It was over a week. A lot of people are extremely happy with the current situation. The current administrator that was moved, extremely happy. Sorry, my tone off.
Yeah, you could finish.
As, like I said, as a parent of five, I've seen a lot. I've been through a lot, went through COVID, three kids home online. It's been a lot the past 20 years. The past seven, eight have been wonderful. Like I said, my last two have had the current as the highest administrator, and it's been amazing. Just think and really reassess everything that's been put out there for you. Leave no stone unturned. Everyone deserves a fair shot and a thorough investigation. I just ask that you do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, everybody who got up here and shared the same. Moving on to our next item. And our student representative reports. Dr. Carl.
Hi, everyone. Not much to report on tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate all the students in their emergency staff. They've been great. And as well as G.I.S., CJ Hooker, and Goshen High School, who have been amazing musical productions. Those were amazing. The Goshen High School band performed at Shopright in Chester as a part of a Make-A-Wish ceremony on March 30. Goshen students Julian Pucci and Chris Mason from the Public Action Nation also attended and donated a blanket. For both CJ Hooker and Goshen High School, the quarter three ends this Friday. And lastly, this Wednesday, April 10, will be the open house at S.A.S. starting at 3:00.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, moving on. Do we have any other review or rest study reports?
The Policy Committee is a continuing process that we met and we're making progress, as we'll see tonight, and we'll be meeting again shortly.
Very good. Thank you for those updates. All right. Next, all of the policies that have been presented this evening for the first reading and second readings, do everybody have time to review?
Yeah.
Very good. All right, next we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. So I just wanna share with my piece of Mr. Loftus' share of the night. When you look at all of the programs that have occurred over the last several weeks between our student performances, between the athletic contest, where our students have reached, it truly is our students that make our district what it is. And I just wanna echo Mr. Loftus' sentiment and how outstanding it has been to see our students perform, to see them compete, and everything that they contribute to our school environment. So to all of our students and all of our activities, our athletic contests, our music programs, our shows, job well done. First piece that I wanted to discuss with the board tonight on my portion of the agenda is regarding our emergency closing days. We had budgeted for four emergency closing days for the school year, and as we are now through the midpoint of April, soon to be almost done, we're at the point where we can have conversations on giving some of those days back. If you don't have a contract, if we don't use those days, we are required either to pay for those days for our employees or put them back in the calendar or stay in broth. So we had an opportunity to look at the calendar, and we are considering, with the board's approval, looking at extending the Memorial Day weekend. We went through the calendar in terms of testing that's going on, in terms of athletic events, in terms of things that are already on the calendar, and have targeted the Thursday before Memorial Day and then the Tuesday after. So essentially, school would be closed the 22nd, the 23rd, the 26th, and the 27th. Wanted to open that up for conversation with the board. I do have the district calendar down here. We could look at other dates if you wanted to discuss other dates. But if the board was in agreement with adding those dates, Mrs. Farrell has an addendum for you to add those this evening. And obviously, if we have any other emergency closings that we have to review again, we'd have to reassess that. But that would give us an opportunity to inform families whether we wanna move forward with adding those days. So I'll open that up to conversation at this point. All right, so Mrs. Farrell, if we can have that addendum, that'd be great. Okay, item number two, I wanted to provide an update on where our program analysis with AEA stands in terms of PPS. As we know, towards the end of our last school year, the board engaged with AEA, our associate that came in and met with the board before the end of last year. It was a challenge for them to get started over the summer. Not that much was able to be completed over the summer. They didn't have access to everything that they needed. So the process didn't really get started until the beginning of September, but they have created a draft report. I've shared that with the board in my weekly report this past week. Once the board is done reviewing that, I would like to invite AEA and to formally present that report at a board meeting. But I would wait for the board's direction on when you want that to be, after you've had a chance to review it. But the board does now have that report in hand. Obviously, I know there are some questions that have risen up regarding community survey that we still wanna address, but at this point, the board does have that draft report in hand. So finally, we are in the final phases of our budget planning process. This will technically be one of the last meetings, potentially the last meeting before the board has to vote on the 22nd to adopt a budget. Ms. Lamorin and I are gonna move over to the podium, the updates on where the budget stands for tonight.
Good evening. We have an update to the 25, 26 budget for tonight. Our revenue is subject to some governor's aid projections. That's because we don't have a state budget at this time. We are hoping for a 1% increase in the budget. And that includes $211,000. We're also looking at the regional cost index possibly changing the calculations and the formula, and that could benefit us as well, but we don't have a calculation on that at this time. Our total budget projections for the Senator side of the budget are $97,464,310. So as you can see, we have a total budget gap of $4,714,345. What's included in our budget projections at this time is the $1,750,000 capital project that we spoke about, and I'll talk about that some more. It also includes attrition. Attrition is where we don't replace retiring positions. We have three teachers retiring and three teacher aides retiring this year, so those are not being replaced in this budget. And we also have our tax levy now projected to be 2.8% with this capital project. And also, just as a reminder, we also include breakage in this budget. We do have seven total staff, which includes six teachers and one clerical position that are re-tiring. So our proposed capital project for next year, these are health and safety concerns. We have the controls in CJ Hooker to control the heating. And that's, actually, we received a small increase on this project of $9,000, so that number is different than the last time we met. And that's due to increasing costs. And we have been forewarned by the company that there could be potentially larger, more increases as well due to the tariffs. These deserve to be an entire alarm system. It's a high school, and that is a rough estimate of $10,000. And then we're proposing the tennis court reconstruction, $525,000. And we want to close completely overhaul in the tennis courts and replacing it due to the conditions of the courts. We have large cracks that have been filled in. But if we were to just resurface, which is what we started out proposing, those cracks could still work their way to the top, and it would be money better spent to overhaul the entire tennis courts. These cracks could resurface, and I don't think there's been much work done on the courts for a few years. It's been a long time, so. Then the soft costs, which are also the taxes and whatnot, that's just, again, a projection at this time. So these numbers are most likely going to change before we get everything bucked down on these projects.
Thank you, Ms. Lamorin. So after our last meeting, obviously, we took direction from the board on looking for ways to how we can reconcile balancing the budget moving into the 25, 26 fiscal year. And as we all know, 80% of any operational budget really deals with staffing. And there's salary benefits when it comes to staffing. So the proposal for tonight really focuses on restoration of some of the positions that were discussed at the last meeting. As Mrs. Lamorin said, there are three retirements at the secondary level that we're proposing not to fill through attrition. I've spoken with the administrators that have, would potentially be impacted by this, and they do believe that it would have no impact on program and the ability still to offer a well-rounded program. Also, in discussion with our administrators, we have three teacher aides that are retiring, and we would not refill those positions, so those would be reduced through attrition. That gives us a total of attrition reductions of about $325,791. On the other side of the budget, we did put back, as per our last conversation, the proposed reduction of a 0.8 portion of administration. We did restore into the budget two elementary instructional positions, one secondary teacher aide. However, we do, to be able to balance this year's budget, meaning the 25, 26 fiscal year, still need to reduce some personnel to be able to balance the budget, and that would be targeted in 24 of our hourly teacher aides. We did look at our coverage primarily in our elementary buildings. I did do a comparison, just a very anecdotal comparison through a quick survey with other superintendents. In comparison to many other districts, we do have more teacher aides, especially in our elementary level, than most of the feedback that I got, and in some cases significantly more than other school districts. So that on the pure reduction side, meaning, you know, people we would have to look at for potentially not having returned for the new year or not having the positions funded for the new year, would give us $639,345 in reductions for a grand total between both attrition and reductions of $965,136. As a reminder, our other discretionary spending that we have reduced through critical analysis of the budget totals over $2 million. This is going to require us to increase our use of fund balance from $1.2 million for this year to approximately $3.75 million for next year, and also using $325,000 of our employee benefit and unemployment reserves. These line item analyses happen in collaboration with both the business office, Director of Buildings and Grounds, our principals, our directors, to really look critically at what potentially we could do without next year. I have to say, my concern is, we must balance the budget, but pulling out a lot of this discretionary spending is really going to pull back on the reins, if you will, and make us be very critical of our spending for next year. It really takes a lot of breathing room, if you will, out of the budget moving into the new fiscal year. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back to Mrs. Lamorin. I think it's important, again, she's going to give you the picture at where the revenue stands as of now. We do have those uncertainties. She talked about, you know, the budget not being reconciled at the state level yet. We have the potential of seeing more foundation aid coming. We also have the potential of the regional cost index changing, so this is as of today, because you will be required at our next meeting to adopt a budget before the community. So we'll turn it back to Mrs. Lamorin with that.
Thank you. So I know we went over proposed budget of a few meetings ago, so I wanted to update that for you as well. And the tax levy, if we go forward with the $1,750,000 project, would equate to a 2.8% increase or $1.6 million? I'm only gonna highlight the changes, if that's all right. If you have questions on the other items, certainly let me know. Charges for other services, we actually have an additional student projected to be coming into the district for next year that we would bill out. This is a student that doesn't live in our district, but we have to provide educational services for, and we are able to build a home district. So that's why that had changed. So then we have use of property and money. And the reason why this has increased is due to interest revenue. Our interest revenue is high again this year. It is, I feel confident with putting a higher number in there for next year and just hope for the best as well, so that increased $200,000. State aid, there is a slight reduction here in what was originally projected, and that's because our spending for our BOSI's equipment has ended. So we are actually spending less than we projected for next, for next year's aid. So we had to adjust that accordingly. That's expense-driven aid, so what you spend now, you get back in the following year. So we had to adjust that based on this year's expenditures projected. And then the appropriated fund balance and reserves, you can see there the amount that we're appropriating in fund balance, and it's been added with the appropriated reserves for a total of $4,750,000, which is an increase of $2.8 million. And our overall change in the budget as compared to 24, 25 is 5.4%. And here we have our projected enrollment slide, which we do not have any changes at this time for projections for next year in kindergarten. And as you can see, we do have a big difference between 2021 and 25, 26. It's actually 160 less students, which equals one grade level coming in, give or take, because you can see we do have some grade levels that are 164 and 161. And it's so important to review this each year so that we can stay cognizant of class sizes. And a contingency budget. If the budget does not pass after two attempts, the board is required to adopt a contingency budget. And under a contingency budget, the levy would be limited to the same amount as the current year, 24, 25, or $55.6 million. In order to meet that, we would have to increase the number of cuts from the last time we presented this slide to $1.65,1,504. And those cuts can't include certain things which were required to provide for students, such as transportation to and from school, textbooks, and such as transportation to and from school, textbooks, and supplies. Cuts would include all equipment items. You're not able to purchase equipment purchases on a contingency budget. And that could actually be detrimental down the road, because then you have to play catch-up. And field trips would be cut, and our capital project would also have to go on hold. Community use of facilities without fees would be prohibited. And here's our budget development calendar and list of presentations. And as you can see, we're up to number six. On Monday, the 21st of April, Board of Ed candidate petitions are due. And most notable is Tuesday at the board meeting on April 22nd. We will need the board to adopt the proposed budget so that we can submit all the paperwork and get the public budget prepared and everything on time. And this is in line with the budget calendar. And on May 12th, we have our public hearing. And on Tuesday, May 20th, is the annual vote. You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, great, thank you both. Moving on to our next item, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Ms. Lorraine Benpot Lamret. All right. Very good. All right, and then moving on to the next item, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So, Mr. Loftus, you did a great job of summarizing a lot of the great events that we had going on here. Just wanted to get a little more personal with those student achievements to offer the recognition.
Honestly, in mind, as you know, we had our state finals at the Syracuse Fairgrounds over the weekend. We had a great representation of the district there with five teams. So two of our teams have qualified to move on to Worlds, one being CJ Hooker Team Schmidt, who took second place. And also, in somewhat of a wild card fashion, Team Seligman from high school took third place and also qualified. So we're very proud of our students there. Also want to mention GIS Team Baroden with, Baroden and Hoffman with a fourth-place finish. Team Lowsee from GIS with a sixth-place finish. And Team Fixon from GIS with a 16th place finish in the state. So congratulations to everyone and best of luck as we move on. Also, on the same day, at OU BOSI's, we had our Goshen High School Mock Trial Team compete. They also did a wonderful job. They were able to defeat the team from the Florida School District in the quarterfinals. And unfortunately, they did lose to O'Neill in the semifinal. But I believe they had a very productive season or competition season. Very proud of our participants, our students. And Mr. Miles did a great job, and all the volunteers as well, in preparing our students for it. As you had mentioned, we had an honoree, Humanities Honoree Breakfast. I had a chance to attend that with Mr. Pentelion, a chance to sit with the families and the honorees. Very proud of Mary Mott and Dalton Fertuno Harris, two very accomplished students, both academically and also in the arts and humanities. It was a wonderful breakfast. Our students had a great time, and most importantly, they received proper recognition for their hard work. I know that you had mentioned the GIS Drama Club, so we just want to send a big thank you out to Ms. Nat. She worked extremely hard, and if you look at the program, she had an awful lot of participants and volunteers with her, and they all made that possible in the GIS auditorium. So very happy for her, very happy for the students, more importantly. A big thank you to the community members that volunteered. Many of you got a chance to see Pippin. Mary Mott was one of the stars of Pippin. Just mentioned her as an honoree. Pippin was great on the 21st and the 23rd, which happened after our last board meeting. So just wanted to recognize the cast and crew there. I know Mr. Quinlan worked very hard in preparing. The set was amazing, the aerials were amazing, so all around a great job. GIS Variety Show tomorrow evening at 6:30, so if you get a chance to get out at the high school, please do. And also wanted to mention that I had a chance to sit with our administrative team and our wonderful scholastic reps to prepare for next school year. So we're looking closely at what professional development opportunities we can bring into the district, what fits within our budget, and also looking at some materials like decodable readers and those items that we can purchase and replace that were supplementals and consumables. And we'll do the same with math moving forward as well. So that's all in process. Next meeting, we'll talk a little bit about the numeracy briefs as we prepare to attend those on rapos. And that'll conclude my report this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, moving on, I need a motion to approve consent agenda. Brett?
Ashley?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Board of Education approves consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve policy updates, second readings, renumbering and renaming, readoptions and retirements. Shannon?
Scott?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming, and readoption of the policies as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to approve minutes for the regular meeting and special meeting. Billy?
Shannon?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Board of Education approves the minutes of the March 17th, 2025, regular meeting and the March 27th, 2025, special meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education.
Ashley? Scott?
Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school-age students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSA, and Committee on Special Education, CSE, during the period February 19th, 2025, through and including March 31st, 2025, and directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services for such preschool and school-age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSA and CSE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to accept donation, Ninth Annual Elementary Special Olympics, Walden Savings Bank.
Brett? Ashley?
Be resolved, the Board of Education does hereby accept with appreciation a $500 donation from Walden Savings Bank to support the Ninth Annual Elementary Special Olympics on May 17th, 2025. Be further resolved, the Board of Education approves increasing the 2024-2025 budget to support the associated expenditures as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to accept the donations, pocket dictionaries from Goshen Rotary.
Billy and Shannon?
Be resolved, the Board of Education does hereby accept with appreciation a $1,179 donation from Goshen Rotary to support purchasing pocket dictionaries for third-grade students. Be further resolved, the Board of Education approves increasing the 2024-2025 budget to support the associated expenditures as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to approve the overnight trip track to Penn Relays.
Here's Scott and Brett.
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the overnight trip for the girls and boys track teams to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on April 23rd, 24th, 2025, and April 25th, 26th, 2025, to participate in the Penn Relays at the University of Pennsylvania. Be further resolved, the Board observes the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of an emergency condition outside of the control of the school district, being sole discretion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to approve budgetary transfers.
Billy and Brett?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the following budgetary transfers in aggregate over $105,000 as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Need a motion to approve changing the start time for the April 24th, 2025 board meeting?
Brett and Scott?
Be resolved, the Board of Education revises the start time of the April 24th, 2025 board meeting related to the Orange Holster BOSI's budget vote and election from 6:30 PM to 7:15 AM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to approve the agreement between Goshen Central School District and Acting Middle School Principal.
Brett? Ashley?
Be resolved, the Board hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an employment agreement dated April 7th, 2025, with Roy Reese to serve on a contractual, non-tenure-bearing basis as the Acting Middle School Principal to commence on April 2nd, 2025, and continue until no later than June 30th, 2025, at a salary of $700 per day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Shane?
Aye.
Need a motion for the declaration of negative impact under SEACR for proposed action.
Billy and Shannon?
Whereas the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District is considering a project for HVAC controls, upgraded CJ Hooker Middle School, and related work collectively to proposed action. And whereas the proposed action qualifies as type-two action as set forth in six NYCRR, section 617.5 of the Implementing Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as it involves the replacement, reconstruction, and/or rehabilitation of existing structures and/or facilities and/or routine activity of the district. And whereas the Board has considered the information and documentation which describes the design and intent of the proposed action, now therefore be resolved with the Goshen Central School District Board of Education, based upon the record before it, including the general, specific, and detailed knowledge of the Board of Proposed Action and under the applicable standards of SEACR and its implementing regulations of six NYCRR, part 617, hereby determine that, A, proposed actions classified as type-two action can be, in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations, the proposed action is not subject to further environmental review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion for the declaration of negative impact under SEACR for proposed action.
Brett? Ashley?
Whereas the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District is considering a project for public addressed system replacement at Goshen High and related work collectively to proposed action. And whereas the proposed action qualifies as type-two action as set forth in six NYCRR, section 617.5 of the Implementing Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACR, as it involves a replacement, reconstruction, and/or rehabilitation of existing structures and/or facilities and/or routine activity of the district. And whereas the Board has considered the information and documentation which describes the design and intent of the proposed action, now therefore be resolved with the Goshen Central School District Board of Education, based upon the record before it, including the general, specific, and detailed knowledge of the Board of Proposed Action and under the applicable standards of SEACR and its implementing regulations of six NYCRR, part 617, hereby determine that, A, the proposed action is classified as type-two action, and D, in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations, the proposed action is not subject to further environmental review. All those in favor?
Close.
All right. Need a motion to approve the declaration of negative impact under SEACR for proposed action.
Billy and Jen?
Whereas the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District is considering a project for tennis court restoration and related work collectively to proposed action. And whereas the proposed action qualifies as a type-two action as set forth in six NYCRR, section 617.5 of the Implementing Regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACR, and it involves a replacement, reconstruction, and/or rehabilitation of existing structures and/or facilities and/or routine activity of the district. And whereas the Board has considered the information and documentation which describes the design and intent of the proposed action, now therefore be resolved, the Goshen Central School District Board of Education, based upon the record before it, including the general, specific, and detailed knowledge of the Board of Proposed Action and under the applicable standards of SEACR and its implementing regulations, six NYCRR, part 617, hereby determine that, E, the proposed action is classified as type-two action, and F, in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations, the proposed action is not subject to further environmental review. All those in favor?
Close.
Need a motion to approve the agreement for services, White Glove?
Ashley and Scott?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education enters into an agreement with White Glove to provide healthcare services to Goshen Central School District students effective July 1st, 2025, according to rates set forth in the agreement. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Need a motion to approve the proposal from Land Associates?
With Billy and Shannon?
Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal from Land Associates Engineering Planning Architecture Surveying, LLC to provide architectural and engineering services for plenum space contamination assessment in the district administration building for a fee of $8,500 for said services. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
All right, and then our additional resolution we have here, 12.14. Need a motion to approve revisions to the 2024-2025 student calendar.
Shannon? Ashley?
Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the district-wide closings on May 22nd, 2025, and May 27th, 2025, to adjust the student calendar. This adjustment is necessary because two additional scheduled emergency closing dates have not been used and must be subtracted from the calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
All right, moving on, any board member issues that anybody would like to bring up? Nope. Very good. All right, moving on to our last item, I need a motion for executive session.
Ashley and Brett?
Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene with the portion of the meeting discussions related to financial history of particular corporations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.